Let's see if that works. 6:59, Mike, you're ready to roll. Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna call the Dunbar and Board of Selectmen meeting to order for May 16th. Time is 7:00 PM. All three selectmen are present. Town administrator is present. Recording secretary is present. And recording is Darren Larson for the benefit of the town residents. Thank you, Don. Filling in for Leo, Mr. Leo Martell. Okay. Gentlemen, we have some minutes first from May 2nd. Did everyone have --
We just have one set of minutes, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes from the May 2nd, 2019 meeting as amended because there were just a few changes.
I'll second Bob's motion.
Any discussion, gentlemen?
Oh, very well done.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass it down for Speaker. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment first. I'll start front row. Do you wanna have anything to say to us, Lee?
Ah, I received Dave, I received a ring on Tuesday. It didn't seem like a pri- a pleasure, pleasant ring.
I'm sorry to hear that. I was just following up with trying to get you things moving forward if that's what needed to be done, so.
I tried calling you twice this week after you called me, referenced to a possibility of doing some work for the transfer station and getting that, getting your license. And I can share what I found, but I'd like you to go first.
Yeah, after, after I, after I received the ring from Mrs. Kamal, I didn't really understand what it was all about.
That's where I think it was a miscommunication. So.
I was gonna say, Mike, you wanna give them an update on what's required? Well, the thing is, um, yeah, I'll give you at least what I found out investigating. Again, I said, they tried to get back to you twice after we talked.
Can I just inter--
Sure.
Okay, so I reached out to Nate because I received an email from Woody. You saw that long email? And Nate was the subject in the email because he was scheduling some kind of test with you for getting the CDL license. So I thought I would be proactive in making sure that everything was required of my part to get you covered under the umbrella of the town. So that's all I was doing when I picked up the phone. I had no idea that what you and Woody had and what he was conversing to me was not clear to you, so there was just a little mix-up of what was going on. So I was just following up with an email.
You were following up to me with an email?
The email was sent to me.
Yeah.
I needed to talk to you. And I didn't get far because you were unclear as to what I was trying to ask you or talk you about. So the conversation stopped and you said that you would call, talk to Woody.
Did you talk to me thereafter?
I did.
Okay. And that's where I took, I did my investigation of what, what the big, what the picture was. And I can give a summary for the record tonight. Are you ready for that?
I'd like to hear it.
Okay. Well, recall that a couple, I know you were looking for some, some additional work. And I know several meetings ago, at this meeting, I said you could possibly drive, if you had a CDL, you could drive for the transfer station, help us with, with transportation issues, especially with Woody's out sick leave or Woody's out sick or he's on vacation. However, and the thing is, that requires, what I found out is, you have to become, we have to have you as a town employee, because you'd be driving a town truck in order to be covered under our town truck. And it's not the same rate as if you were plowing for the town, because you would be bringing your own truck to the, to the table. And so I wanted to share with you, we were gonna, I was gonna start at about seventeen dollars an hour and change compared to an entry level person working down at the transfer station. So if you had your CDL, we could get you as an entry level, about seventeen dollars an hour, driving the truck. And then again, went one step further, how do I get my CDL? Well, the thing is, in order to both, to get the insurance involved and all that kinda stuff, to get you through the license process, we could just bring you on as an employee, we could still do that to get you through the process if you wanted to pursue it. But I don't know if you wanna pursue it. The question is, I needed to talk to you as, I don't know what your expectation was of how much you were gonna get paid per hour, and you were, you were very vehemently against becoming a town quote employee. And so we, we really don't have any--
Well, I didn't know what the reasoning for becoming a town employee was.
Well, part of it is a liability issue. A liability because you're driving, you could damage something, you're insured under our liability for the town. You could hurt someone, so it's a liability issue. It's insurance, it's our insurance for you in case you get injured. It's all, it's all those things. It's a liability issue.
This started out as, as a way to get a CD, commercial driver's license for snow plowing in my own vehicle.
Then, the thing is, I can't help you there. The thing is, I looked at it as, at least when I, when we talked, I thought it was working, basically doing some work for the town hauling trash using the town vehicle.
I don't, I don't necessarily need to add to my workload in that respect.
Okay.
Like I said, it started out as a way to get a commercial driver's license so I could plow snow in my own vehicle for the town of Dunbar.
Okay. How did the transfer station get involved in this thing?
Because they have, he has a garbage truck that I can take an examination with.
But we're not, we don't loan the truck out for people to go get their license if they're not gonna be working there.
Okay.
And that, that's the bottom line with that.
Okay.
And so there may have been, that's where I think we may be on a different sheet of music. We've just not communicated. I wanna make sure we're clear tonight.
So, yeah, the, like I said, it started out as a way to get my commercial driver's license to plow snow--
Okay.
--in my own vehicle for the town of Dunbar.
Now, is your own vehicle, you cannot use your own vehicle for the driver's test?
I can use any vehicle that's acceptable to the state--
Correct.
--for commercial driving.
Okay. Then what's the issue with your vehicle?
The issue with my vehicle right now? It is all apart.
Okay, understood.
Well-- However, I thought, somebody mentioned to me a few months back--
Yeah.
--that the way to get a commercial driver's license, to do that, to plow snow for the town of Dunbar, would be to help the town with hauling trash to the wheel breaker or wherever it goes.
That's a separate issue from the snow plowing, though. Separate, completely separate from the snow plowing. Because we don't, we don't basically contract with independent contractors for our, for our trash hauling, we can hire them outright. We have, we have one backup already who's a, he delivers fuel in the winter and he's on, he's on call as a backup. Really haven't used him, but he's on, he's an employee of the town. He's on a, so we say, a recall schedule if we need it.
On call.
On call, thank you.
So what, so why would I, why would I, why would I, why was I suggested to ask--
I--
Patrick if it would, if it would be okay?
I have, I have, I have no idea because I don't think it generated from here. If it did, we had miscommunication. I thought you were just looking for additional work. And when, that's the comment that may have been made, when you're looking for additional work, we're always in the, looking for backup drivers for the transfer station.
At a set rate.
At a set rate. And we have a set rate.
You don't have to be an employee.
You'd have to be an employee. Because I'll give you the honest, the honest difference. As a plow driver, you'd probably make almost three ti, close to two and a half times the rate of pay as a contractor. And the thing is, as a contractor coming to the town as a snow plower, you bring your own truck. The thing is, with your own, bringing your own truck, there's a liability issue. You have to maintain your own insurance, your own liability. At our transfer station, we have our own truck and we maintain that separately. And there's a disparity, that's why we don't necessarily, there's a pay disparity there.
Well, you know more about it than I do.
Well, we try. But I think it's, so I think it's, I'll just say, I apologize. If you mis, if you misread us, I apologize. Thing is, we don't loan our truck--
It was, it was a miscommunication because I had spoken with Patrick about it.
And he, he basically--
And he was aware that I was going to take an examination with the garbage truck.
He thought you would come to work at the transfer station. It was in, he was, he had a big question mark when I talked to him.
But he never suggested I should become an employee.
No, that's, that's what I thought was happening too. And so when you called me, when you called me Monday, I said, what's go, I, I had to put, look at the big picture of what was going on. And the thing is, I think in retrospect, I think we all miscommunicated earlier this year. And so I apologize for that. But I hope we're clear now. And gentlemen, you wanna help me out here?
Well, number one, though, is it's more of an insurance issue as far as it being an employee. An employee, if you were going, we'll say, to take your test with the truck and something happened, that's a way out of the insurance not being liable because the truck's owned by the town, it's run by a town employee.
Would it be a good idea to become an employee at, at will and take the examination with the, with the garbage truck?
Well, you could become an employee. I guess you could go take your examination and decide you don't wanna do anything. And that's perfectly up to you if you decided to do that route, but you, technically, you have to be a town employee. I mean--
Well, let, let me put it this way, Nate, to make it simpler. If you became, like our other driver that did it for us, the guy works part-time some different jobs throughout the year. So when we said that we were looking for a driver to fulfill the CDL driving for the transfer station when Woody was on vacation, out sick or those, certain days of the week the stuff still has to move. In order to drive that truck, you have to become a town employee. And to do that, you have to go for the physical, you have to fill out the W-9 forms and everything for lean to fill out for the, to be a town employee. So you'd be a town employee, but you'd be on call. But if what you're asking, if it's a good idea, sometimes it's not a bad idea because say Jeff needed a backup to drive one of our town trucks through the winter. If you were already a town employee with a CDL driving, he could have you fill in on one of our town trucks where he couldn't do that right now either. So--
I can't do any of that until I--
Right.
--until I had fulfilled my commercial driver's license examination.
Right. So what we're saying is, in order to do that with a town truck, you have to, in essence, become a town employee. And whether, and whether you use that after or say, no, I can't make it this week or I can't drive for you this week, that's up to you. But you could become a town employee part-time, let's say.
Is there a set, is there a set rate that Jeff has to drive the truck?
Yeah, there are set rates for, for employees, for him, and there are set rates for the transfer station. And like Mike said, the ones with CDL drivers get a increase because obviously everybody doesn't have a CDL driver's license. And so they get an increased wage when they're driving that truck over the regular employees down there.
So would it be a good idea to become a town employee?
I don't think it would become a bad employee.
I mean, I'd say--
I don't think it'd be a bad employee.
You guys, as a board, have to decide too.
Right.
And then I have to send him for a physical and then he has to go through the orientation paperwork.
So is the physical separate from the DOT?
Yes, it is. It's a whole separate, it's a regular health physical that you go through us. And part of the CDL, after you get your license, you'll be required to get that--
It's been a couple of years since I had a, a physical from the doctor.
Right. So they would send you for a physical from the town and--
But I, but I'll be honest with you, what is your intention, I think, is your intention to at least help out the town? I think it's, I think it'd be advantageous. So if you didn't even have your truck, you could drive one, as Dave said, one of the town's snow trucks--
Yeah.
--down the road. That would be an option.
I mean, when it comes to the snow plowing, if I'm an employee of the town, I'm not mandated to have a commercial driver's license through the state.
That's not correct.
No.
That's not correct.
No.
Even, even Jeff Crosby's son who works under the highway department only drives a small truck. He's not allowed to drive the larger trucks like Pete does and Jeff does.
I was informed by a state police officer that if I'm working directly for the town plowing snow, I'm exempt from commercial drivers.
I think what they, what they meant by that, and I'm not 100% positive, Nate, but they exempt you on your medical card. In other words, if you're using a town truck, your medical card is exempt.
That's correct.
So not the CDL license, but you don't have to go get the medical card if you don't ever drive--
Commercial.
None--
It was a conversation over the phone with Stakely's man who explained to me that if you're working directly for the town or municipal, municipality, you are exempt from having a commercial driver's license.
I will have to do my follow-up within our insurance company because I don't know that that is a correct statement, whether, can you give me the guy's name? I mean, we have to follow our policy.
Well, irregardless--
I don't require--
Irregardless, you would want one anyway, so.
That, that's, that's kinda what started this--
Right. Irregardless, you would want one anyway.
--to get a commercial driver's license. It was said it would be a good idea to talk to Woody and see if he could help out with that.
I, I think Woody was on the impression that you were gonna work down there. And that's where confusion arises.
I gladly, I gladly would have helped out if he needed any help.
Okay.
Lee, what part of that, what else is required from us if you went to become a town employee to get that? You've gotta fill out all the forms and town--
Yeah, provide the--
--papers and W-9s.
Forms of ID, go through the orientation, but he has to pass a physical first.
And what's inclusive in our physical? Do they do drug testing, regular physical?
Not at this point, but if he's going to become an employee with a CDL under our license, he will become part of the drug pool. I want to add--
That's a, that's a random drug pool?
That's a random drug pool that we pay annually for membership.
I guess I'll, what we can do is leave it for you to think about and then get back to us for what you wanna do. Okay? Because we, we haven't even, when you talk to me, we haven't, the board, you, we have to basically make a decision to hire you. And we haven't even done that yet. And we usually have you fill out an application. We don't even have an application yet. So the thing is, I would, after this meeting, I would maybe coordinate with Lee, if you want to pursue it that way, fill out an application, find out what the rates of pay is and make sure you understand all the rates of pay, which will be different for driving a vehicle for the, for the, even for the town, even the town garages too.
It wasn't supposed to be so, so organized. It was supposed to be that if you guys needed help--
No, but the thing is, it's a liability issue. We do do it, we do have, we have to have it organized to protect you and the town. Because what we don't wanna do is, it's in that, you know, God forbid, it's a liability issue. You hit someone's car, you injure someone, it's, it's, we have umbrella policy covering all our employees.
I know all about liability insurance.
Okay.
Okay. All about liability, driving vehicles, commercial, liability, know all about it.
Okay.
So I can appreciate, you know, your concern.
But that's, that's where we, we know, we, we don't just do it on the handshake, we have to fill out an application, a formal appointment application.
The medical, the medical is an occupational medical examination.
Correct, yeah.
Is it not a regular--
It's not a CDL.
They're not checking your heart, they're checking the seat--
If you can lift.
If you can lift and--
Motion, range of motion, whatnot.
Yeah, I don't think you'd have any problem with that.
So I don't--
So it would be something further down the road. I wouldn't be able to schedule an examination the next week.
Okay.
Right? We would have to go through physical.
We have to go through the physical--
And pools.
--paperwork. And then it's gotta come before the board, we vote on it, and it's a variety of things to step by.
Probably better off doing the commercial driving license examination on my own.
That may be an option. I'll leave it, that's your decision though. And that may be a easier option.
But I just, I just don't understand how it came about that.
Well, I think it was, as I said--
Wouldn't be a good idea to talk to Patrick.
Only if you were interested in driving for him, that's what I'm looking for.
So we should get some clarity there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And if I misled you, I was just trying to follow up with my job as a town administrator.
I was, I was concerned because you said what, what him and I talked about was Melon Boyd.
What I said was that, I don't believe I said those words.
No.
I did not use--
Maybe I, maybe I, maybe I was, first thing in the morning, I could have been reading the paper and, and heard something different.
But the thing is, I have to say, Nate, when you called me, I thought you were very respectful to me and you were concerned that you were being respectful. You know, you did know, Nate, you don't wanna be disrespectful to anybody, especially you either.
Okay.
So the thing is, it was not so noted. Yeah, the thing is, so it goes both ways.
Now, I do understand that you had a job to do. When I first started plowing snow here in town, you were concerned about my insurance certificate.
Yeah, I have to, I've delegated that to someone else in my office now, but that's a requirement by our insurance that anyone working as a subcontractor for the town, that they provide, whether it's for line striping, for paint, they all provide a certificate.
I would not be on the road without insurance.
Well, it's just--
Anything, anything can happen.
But we need a copy of it, because I'm doing my due diligence by making sure we have a copy in our address.
Anything is--
I would like to, I would have a call on that.
A call?
A call, yeah. I never received a call. I, I heard from Mr. Crosby that he wasn't gonna allow me on the road because you didn't have an insurance certificate.
I don't think that's a correct statement.
Well--
I think you're confusing a certificate with a CDL license. Because I know Joe Marie picks up the phone and calls everyone to remind them that they have to, their certificate says hiring and they have to renew it. She does it to John Wigan from Moane, she does it to Jeff Crosby. Woody's a town employee, so he's not required--
And I'd been notified from the get-go that I needed a commercial driver's license. I could have done that.
No, I hope it's--
And it wouldn't have been such an emergency to do it in the middle of winter.
I like to look, look forward. Again, we can look in the rear's and the back all we want, but we gotta look forward. And the thing is, to look for the future. And that's where we have to go.
I try.
Okay.
I try to be proactive.
So the thing is, winter's, winter's coming, but it's not here yet.
Yeah.
But, so get, get your CDL, so at least get on the, the snow plowing.
I will.
Okay. And I'll look back at the confusion and we'll say, we'll just chalk that up to experience and we'll look forward from now on. Okay?
I appreciate that.
Okay. Thanks for coming in, Nate.
All right. Take care.
Any questions, please stop by.
I should be okay.
Okay.
I'm on the public comments.
Oh. First of all, we'd like to thank the selectmen and our chief of police for watching the traffic for Arts on the Common. And that, we had a very good turnout on Saturday and Sunday was a little cold, but people still came out. We generated between all the vendors and this is the latest figures I have, our food tent or raffle tent, stuff like that, in sales over the two days, fifty-six thousand dollars and change. So we had a good turnout with the vendors. And before expenses and that, we brought in for the town hall restoration project, sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars or approximately. And we got our expenses to come out of that yet, but it looks like we're gonna be able to donate a good chunk of change to the project. One thing that helps is, you know, we got expenses and we talked about Dave's and the handicap bathroom and that, so I've got the invoice there. Now, if you guys wanna pick up the whole invoice, that means there's more money that'll go to the town hall restoration project. So I'll let you decide that. We're talking four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
That's for both of them.
And the handicap bathroom was two sixty-five and a regular bathroom or party potty is eighty dollars. So I, I think we read on the difference there. But like I say, if you have it in the budget, why, that's just more to go there.
What'd you say the total was?
Totals that we brought in between the vendor fees, sponsorship--
No, no, I got, I got those, I was looking at the, four twenty-five was your total invoice?
Oh, yeah, four hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Now--
I think you authorized two hundred at an earlier meeting.
Yeah. So--
That, so the two sixty-five, would you have two singles and then a?
Well, we had one single and one handicap.
They clean when they pump it out.
And they pump it out twice.
Oh, okay.
And it goes down to--
Yeah, so it's fresh.
--or conquer.
The shit wasn't having up.
Didn't eat any on your field?
Let's move on, I don't think you--
Watch, you can leave that one up.
So, I don't know if you noticed the Old Home Day banner, we still have it up there. We figured we'd leave it. A lot of people say, oh, free ice cream at two this afternoon. No, it's Old Home Day.
They read what they wanna read.
Yeah, they read what they wanna read.
That's why I came and I couldn't find it.
So, anyway, if it's all right with you, we'll leave it up. We also have one in the community center that's up until home day.
One down--
Yeah, down to school, so. And then as we get closer, we'll post a couple more pages corner and stuff like that.
No, they brought us, I brought us the signs.
Nope, nope.
Okay, good. Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
You can bribe us with ice cream any day. Lena, you're here, welcome. Word in public comment.
Oh, perfect. That was good timing on my part, thank you. I just wanted to make the selectmen aware that the state had issued us two Lexmark printers for our vehicle registrations. This is about ten years ago when they had gotten them, I believe through a grant. They are going to discontinue servicing them. Their service contract is up as of, I think, June 30th. From then on out, they will no longer service these machines. We have the option of keeping them. We would just have to do some transfer of ownership forms, no cost to the town, but we would be responsible for maintaining them. So our option is keep them and maybe Lee can look into having them put on our maintenance contract or replacing them. And the state has just sent the guidelines on what they require for us to purchase as a replacement. In other words, when we do replace them, we just can't go out and get any printer. They've got--
Is replacements at our cost?
The replacement would be at our cost.
But they keep the free ones as long as we can.
We keep the free one as long as we can. Hope and I discussed it and we agreed that we should, you know, if it's all right with you, keep the ones, they are getting old and they're getting tired and I don't know how much longer they'll last. And of course, as our volume picks up, they, their increased use will wear on them. But we also thought, you know, the state had given me a short list of recommendations for types of printers. I haven't bothered to look at the prices yet, one, from a time standpoint, and two, we'll let the other towns who are purchasing those printers get them. And after they use them for a while, then I can network with the other town clerks and ask what the pros and cons are of those particular printers.
Yeah, I'm under consensus that we could keep using those as long as they hold up and--
No, no.
--they should wear them on tour.
No. And Lee, I'll pick them up under a service contract.
And we don't have anything that we own outright, we don't currently have under a service contract.
You just call as needed.
But can you give me the information? If it's expensive enough, it might be something I should look at and add, but I'm not sure if the current provider or if I'd have to reach out through another company to give But I'm not sure if the current provider or if I'd have to reach out through another company to give us a service. So just give me the model numbers and.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and one other thing, Hope and I are finalizing the dog license letters. I think we've got about three hundred of them going up. Just giving you a heads up, chief.
Get your big net.
How many dogs we have in town?
Probably more than I have tags for.
More than we have people left.
We have over seven hundred.
Seven hundred?
Wow, that's a thorough population. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. That was it.
All right, thanks. Sir?
Dave Lavoy.
Dave, how are you?
Good. Would you like me to give you an update on?
We said we're in public comment and that can be, it's a good time to do it right now.
Okay. So the solar project is progressing well?
I understand they were there today.
Yes, yep, we had a bunch of appropriate parties there today. Building inspector, Grand State Solar, myself, we're all there. Woody was there. So we did flag out the areas that, where the trench would go of the power line going out to the array. We flagged where the, where the two row of arrays would be. Woody's fully aware of having to move the compost pile and having that done. So everything was, I guess satisfactory in terms of our meeting today. Mike from the building department was satisfied with, I guess, a new plan that he got with yesterday that had the fact that the racking system and the, basically all the mechanical hardware was suitable for installation in New Hampshire, even though the company that issues that certification is in California.
I understand they had New Hampshire engineers sign off on that.
Yes, yes.
So yeah, he did give us a letter updating us as well.
He did?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
He's, he's got a thumbs up green light.
Okay, good. Yeah, I mean, there was things like, you know, it's designed for a hundred and fifty mile an hour winds and we only have to design to one-ten here, snow loads, all that kind of stuff, so it all, yeah, it's all satisfied.
Great.
We did identify the, some of the trees that we would like down in the area and Woody was there to walk us through the, you know, walk around with the trees. Some of them are for preventing physical damage that, so they could never fall on the array and damage it. Others, there's just a couple on one side, actually in the building side. As you're going in on the right-hand side, there's some tall, a couple tall pines that could produce some shading. And so we said if we're gonna be in there taking anything out, we could take those out too.
Okay, great.
Woody's gonna talk to the town forests folks about possible options for removing the trees that were identified. Whether that be a hired effort or volunteer effort or whatever, so. It doesn't seem to be that huge of a job, but needs to be figured out in terms of who's gonna go in there and do it. The Eversource has actually been in and done their evaluation of the site. There's always the chance that they identify the interface to the, to the road as being insufficient, including transformers and wires. And that would have been extra cost. The good news is they said it's all good as is. Transformers good, lines are good. Basically, they've given the green light for, for us to move forward.
When, when is completion date estimated?
Installation date is estimated for around the first week of July. Right now, that actually gives us six weeks to get the trees out of there because it's a lot easier to take trees down when there's just empty field than when there's stuff there that could be, could be damaged. So six, figure seven weeks from now would be installation. After installation, it gets turned live usually within seven to fourteen days by Eversource.
Excellent.
Yes. So we're, we're likely looking at a live date in July.
Dan, keep us abreast of the tree situation, how that's coming and just let us know if you run into any hiccups in the road on that.
Okay.
We'll try and work with you on that as best we can.
Okay.
Is it true that, I saw you at the energy fair. Is it true you won the door prize?
Quick door prize.
The electric car?
I was gonna say, is there something I'm missing out on? The pellet furnace?
I couldn't resist.
Yeah.
He had, the energy fair had his new car which was only two weeks old. You walked in there, you think that was the door prize, it was sitting right by the door.
Yeah, it's right there. It's right out here right now, blinking at you.
You're sharp looking on the wheel.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you for your hard work and we look forward to seeing you going live.
Yeah, excellent. I'll, I can email you with any updates too, because at this point it looks like reasonably smooth sailing. So I don't see any, I don't see any speed bumps for us, so.
Dan, where is the burn pit actually moving to?
Burn pit's staying where it is. It's the, it's the compost pile. The front row, front array row actually hits the back edge of where the compost pile is now. Woody was expecting to have to move that anyway.
Okay.
So, but we're good, I'm gonna say, you know, maybe even seventy feet, seventy-five feet from the burn pile back.
Okay, great.
It's a pretty decent distance there. Because the array was able to be very oriented towards the backside of that open area, which actually means we have to take a couple of the poplars and sumacs that are, that are growing on the back edge just to prevent anything from falling in. So we, we have it oriented pretty far back.
Okay. Again, thank you for your hard work on that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming by.
Yes.
We look forward to having the media go backwards.
Yes, absolutely, especially in July.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Dan? Oh, okay. All right, I'm gonna bring him back to the board. And I like that, I think they have a donation there.
Lee, you have that money?
I do. Don Larson was nice enough to drop that off this week.
Well, Don, they're getting smaller. What's wrong?
Off-season.
Off-season.
That's just, that's just from having it set up in the raffle tent.
Okay.
You know, people put in there.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion per RSA thirty-one, colon, ninety-five, dash, B, Roman numeral three, paragraph B, to accept a donation in the amount of twenty-eight dollars and ninety-three cents from fundraising by Don Larson for the Rees-Across Dunbar.
I'll second that. Any discussion? On favor? Lee, if you'd make that happen.
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome. There's a, Mike Cummings has a building report in there referencing the solar array. I think we all had a chance to read it.
Yeah.
So it's all good. I have no issues with that. He's also working out another thing on library thing, correct? Dave, I think he's working a little bit on that.
Yeah, I had Don do a little investigation on the towns that were grandfathered with libraries and older buildings like ours used as town halls. And just looking into what parts of the buildings and egress and limitations and what towns are being used and.
Still working burgers?
It is. And I got a list of the towns, there's a substantial amount of them. I'm actually gonna, in a few weeks, take a ride around to the towns and see some of their uses and see how similar they are to ours.
Okay.
Just to look for some feedback from how they were able to do it on the state level and whatnot.
All right, thank you, Dave.
Try and keep that rolling.
Since we're on the same area, library, I understand you're gonna be meeting next Tuesday, the twenty-first, with some, no, excuse me. With some building contractors for the fire.
Fire station.
I'm corrected.
And police station roof next Tuesday.
Every time I hear roof, I think of the library. But we have another roof problem.
Yeah. And Jeff Trexler has worked on that roof issue this week and come in, gotten the key in his.
Okay, that's, that's what I was looking for. Okay, thank you. All right, next item. I just thought I'd point out that we got central regional, central regional planning just alerted us to SB three oh six. They snuck a bill into the budget process which allows people who get an adverse ruling from the planning board or the zoning board to appeal to a three-person commission of the state instead of court. They can go and overturn, these three people can overturn any town zoning ordinance, planning board decision. And essentially, from his opinion, he agreed with me, usurps the power of the local planning board and zoning board. And I asked Lee to get, we do have a lobbyist there, we have a municipal association who is our lobbyist. And I wanna see what the municipal association is doing on our behalf. But it's, right now, it's in, it's SB three oh six, good reading here, but.
Yeah, I read it.
I sent them all to.
So just be aware of that. We could talk to our state senator if it comes close to a vote, but nothing is, I, I can't see, that's a win-win for small, for any community. So I don't see any communities really in favor. There are pros and cons of it. We were discussing a little bit the planning board last night, but that's, that's an issue that's bubbling up. Okay, we have a, if you recall last week, we talked about a piece of property on Guinea Road and getting access to that. Obviously, the conservation commission has sent them a courtesy letter that they're interested in buying their property. Now leave it at that. That's just an FYI.
Mike, in reference to that, they're interested in buying it and/or creating an easement on it too.
Okay.
Access and connect the properties, both the stone property with the property up here for the curbers.
Very good. That would, they'll leave you the school issue.
Yeah, it seemed to be that they still, they still like that school connection and access just to allow the school kids to come across.
Absolutely. Okay. I like to talk about, next item is a leftover item from last week. We had some information passed to our mailboxes regarding the speed limit set for dirt, for class five dirt roads in town. It was suggested by members of the audience and that we reduce it. And I wanted to open it for discussion on the board. We all had an opportunity to read some of the links that the chief gave to us this week. And I got input from both the road agent and the chief, and I'm gonna speak on their, what they provided to me. But I'll open up to the board first before I speak.
Well, she'll give us the information you have.
Okay, I will.
It would make more sense.
All right. Essentially, the chief felt he was strongly in favor of just setting the speed limit at twenty-five miles an hour and had no issues with that. And they felt we should just go ahead and do it. And so he's opposed to there. The road agent also felt like it's doing something nice for the residents who live on these dirt roads and if it will keep some of the people from speeding down them and kicking on the dust. He was a hundred percent in favor of making all class five dirt roads at twenty-five miles an hour. And he would, he has it within his budget to forward the signs and install them.
You know, I gave this some thought this week and I, just noticing what the hazard is on thirteen and Tenny Hill. When you come in to that area, it's wide, but it narrows really quick. You can't get one car behind the other, beyond the other, so you wait till that car either comes down the road or they're waiting for you to go up to where you're going. Once you get beyond that whole area, it does widen out going up towards Grapevine Road. So because everybody on that road, and actually, the person that was here talking about it said, I have to go back, I'll get them all sign a petition because some of the people I talked to wanna see that speed reduced. And I've talked to a few of them, but you know, he made, he had gone from house to house to make sure that he had consensus. So I agree with the twenty-five mile an hour on that dirt road. My concern with going to and putting an umbrella on all the dirt roads are, some of the dirt roads are wider and people living on that road might think that twenty-five is slow compared to thirty. So, you know, kinda don't wanna take something away from someone if they're happy. I guess you could look at it as a case by case, but I mean, whatever, whatever makes it work for Jeff Crosby too with the road agents, you know.
I'll, I'll give my input on it.
Since you live on a class five dirt road.
They, and my, my road is narrow in some parts, although with a little additional speed, you can generally pass each other a little better, I think. But you know, I'm, I didn't wanna go townwide with it either. I think twenty-five is just a little too slow. In this day and age, these vehicles are a lot better than the older ones where those speed limits were actually set for. I know it's thirty-five. I would have been happy going thirty, but twenty-five, I agree with Bob, it's just a little too slow for a lot of them that are wider in several areas. So I don't think we should go townwide. And if you guys wanna look at just this road, I would be happy with just looking at this road.
And that's what I was looking at. I'm just concerned with roads where people have no problem, the roads are wide enough and they can go back and forth without any problem. And we're deciding for them when we haven't been approached, you know, with.
What, basically when they were, when they were.
So, I mean.
I thought all the roads are posted thirty.
No, if they're not posted, it's thirty-five.
Oh, it is, okay.
Did you remember Brian Pike cleaned that up for us last week?
So you wanna do by, by?
So I would, I wouldn't have a problem approving Tenny Hill Road. But again, I don't know what others are thinking, where they're living, and they may come back to us and say, why did you set twenty-five on our road? You know, we use it all the time and we had no problem doing the speed limit on the road.
Okay. The, the road agent felt that, he, he want, his idea was to do it townwide, but he's willing to, he's, take direction from us.
Well, I tell you, another road that's tough, and I don't know if you noticed that last Tuesday when we went with the conservation commission to clean up. But Leo and I were heading back towards Black Book Road. There was a contractor's truck flying down that road. Now you know when you're going out the other end to get on Monauta Road, that gets narrow.
Yeah.
Is it a Kibble Pond you're talking about?
Yeah. So, but again, they haven't approached us and I don't wanna take something away from someone if there's not a need for it.
And I wouldn't wanna go lower than thirty townwide, only because.
So what, what I'm hearing is do it by, as come to us. And since the residents of Tenny Hill, we could probably do that one as a start.
I would stick with Tenny Hill myself.
You have consensus?
Yeah, well, you know, when Dave Nordle was here, he talked about his neighbor and he wanting it to be twenty-five. And we accommodated him. So if there's someone on the road that thinks that the speed limit's too much, they're gonna approach us and we could make a change, but I don't, just unilaterally, I don't completely care.
And I think chief, you responded last night, we didn't, we haven't had a lot of complaints as far as the speed on our dirt roads as far as what your officers had seen and stuff out there, so kind of a non-issue.
For the most part.
Why don't we just go with, I think our consensus is one.
One of the things that, Jeff, can appreciate is the fact that a slower speed means less dust. Means that you won't see Ron Smokeham coming in here.
Well, the thing, that's just it. The thing is, we got a variety of residents who are on the road that come in and the thing is, we're tired of eating dust. Then they have to give them the same opportunity with lower speed limit.
Now, the fact that you posted doesn't, well, as the chief will probably tell you, it's probably not gonna change the speed all that much. But at least when it comes to enforcing it, they could.
I think, I think chief felt, he gave me a statistic that, he said, if you put a speed limit out there, ninety percent of the people will respect the speed.
I was just gonna say, people at speed, they're gonna speed.
Right.
People that pay attention to the signs, they're gonna pay attention to the signs.
It's like going through town here. I mean, I mean, we have people go through thirty. I go thirty, between thirty and thirty-one.
I don't know. I was following you on your road and you were going pretty quick.
Okay, so the consensus is, Tenny Hill.
So I would make it, actually, I'd make a motion that Tenny Hill Road would be posted at twenty-five miles an hour.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? And things I just wanna do by, would respond to resident concern.
Correct. I'm good with that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good. Keeping on.
We'll go through the rest of our mailbox, right, Mike? That's all we have left.
Yes, but exactly. I have to do one more follow-up since we're on rows and this is keeping the idea of rows. And parking spaces, the road agent actually measured out front here and he could paint the handicap. They would have, on this side, the opposite side of this building would have room for a ten-foot spa, ten-foot parking spaces, approximately ten feet. Maybe nine feet and a few inches, but closer to ten feet for ten parking spaces. And on this side, you have room for five parking spaces and would have enough room to make the curves here, would not interfere on anyone's driveway. And the thing is, he's just waiting for direction from us. Remember, we gave him the original direction was just the handicap. But he's, he's willing to do the, he measured it out and this is, it's gonna be about ten spaces, about ten feet parking spaces across the opposite side of the building. And again, five on this side.
Mike, last fall when we discussed this, we went back and forth whether we lined it or don't line it. I actually like it unlined with more of a country atmosphere out there. I do think that we need the handicap and we need the ends marked like we talked about last week.
Okay.
Where they turn, but I'm in favor of leaving it country parking, not a lot of lines, not a lot of restrictions and just doing the handicap end of it and doing the ends so people know where they gotta stop parking out to infringe on the road there, infringe on that road.
And Bob, your thoughts?
Yeah, well, I agree with him. And one thing though I would like to see is maybe this side, the spaces, so they're marked for employee. Because that way, when you guys come in, we have no idea whether that business gets going or whether the church is doing something. But it'd be kind of a nuisance to come in and find out you can't even park to go to work, you know?
I mean, would you.
And then, and most of the time, the employees park on the side.
Were you designated employee parking?
Yeah.
Yeah. I never thought about that.
Well, you know what? At night, when they're closed, I guess you can figure there's no one here. But during the day, makes a difference, you know?
Do you guys have trouble finding parking?
We do for the sake that everyone takes a parking in half. That puts the fourth car photo down and takes one non-resident, non-employee to park at the end of that. It puts you into the right-of-way of that exit. So it almost needs no parking at the end of our lane here as well.
So he, he can put five spaces on this side here.
Five would be good and.
Dan, go ahead. This is what it's worth. By marking the parking spaces, you're gonna get, you'll get a higher volume of vehicles parked in the same, the same area. Because when people park, they tend to leave plenty of room between their vehicles if they don't mark. So you will get more car density. You know, it'll be helpful during the day, but it'll really be helpful when there's events at, you have a library or a car in it or something like that. You will get more parking if it's worth it.
I'm ambivalent.
More parking?
I'm ambivalent. I like the idea of maybe.
Pay a section off the five on this side. Is that what you're alluding to?
Yeah.
Striking at five percent. That would give us five, we'll mean, go halfway.
Yeah, because I like to park crooked once in a while and with the lines.
And last week, you were taking two spaces last week. You, you were noted to be taking two spaces last week, Bob.
Yeah, you don't, you weren't there when there was a car on each side, so I just snuck in there.
Okay. All right. So the consensus is handicaps, handicap with the, the ends over here marked off for the right-of-ways and striking on at least this side, we'll put the creek five spaces over here. No consensus? Okay, we're good there. Again, we'll hold off on striking the entire parking lot. I, I'm ambivalent, but I, I hear you, chief, on that one too. All right, speed limits. We have inbox. This is homework for you? We have, um, inbox, and this is homework for you, one for Lean. One of our residents has made a proposal, he's got no agenda, he just thought it might be worthwhile for the town. Uh, it's a detailed proposal, but what he's talking about is moving the town hall building, the town offices, to the town hall proper and moving the library over here.
Okay, I heard from the individual.
Yeah, and so.
Several times.
But he put it in writing, he's got pros and cons, and, uh, if we could talk about that next week. Okay?
Yeah, I'm glad he's reaching out to you now.
Oh, okay, okay. He, he's, uh, but the thing is, he's not pushing this, he's not pushing, he's, he's really put some thought to it.
You know what, I, I understand, but, you know, I can only hear it so many times.
Okay. Um, continuing on, inbox, uh, we have, uh, some emails that came in from Woody. Uh, I understand we also had some hiring actions we'll be doing tonight, maybe, in review, um, but, um, there's a few things, uh, he's concerned about, uh, pay raises, uh, Matt is down.
Saturday hours.
Yeah, and I, I told him, there's no issue with overtime, because we're social staff, Lean has approved overtime, um, for him, and so I, I relayed that to him this week, there's no issue there. As we referred last, last time he came in to talk to us, and he asked the idea of having someone do volunteer work at the transfer station occasionally. I don't wanna transfer, volunteer, I'd rather have him come in as employee, pay the guy to do whatever he wants to come in.
I think there's a little bit too much liability with no training and.
That's what I'm thinking too.
Or there's not enough information to make.
I know it was all volunteer at one time before, but we're kinda beyond that now, and there's a lot of machinery there that somebody could get hurt on, we've actually got injuries on employees.
And that's why I'm, I'm thinking, if, if someone really wants to work down there, even as a volunteer, they need to go be appropriately trained and brought in as employee.
Get the right safety and boots and all that on.
Exactly. And so, uh, Woody, Woody's not coming in tonight, but I think that was a concern, if he comes in, we can talk to him next time. I understand Bob has two candidates he interviewed this week, which are gonna be good.
Bob, what are your thoughts on the, uh, volunteer?
Well, we volunteered there before, you don't, they're not held to the same standards, and if he's using them in the front, and they're not bailing, and they're not running any other equipment, I don't think it's a problem, but I don't have any idea what this volunteer is willing to do or not do, you know?
Yeah.
That's the whole thing, it's kinda general.
Yeah.
But if we knew that they were just gonna work the front and sort the things out, I, you know, we've done that before, you know?
Yeah, we have, um, a lot of the kids that need to do community services, they come in, as long as they're the age group, they'll work in these areas, they're technically like volunteer.
Just looking at the, uh, like, one kid gets stuck with a needle, one of our workers.
Okay, falls in a trash bin and gets crushed.
I don't know, it just.
Did that happen this week?
For community service, they have used it before.
They do, yeah, quite often.
I guess let's wait some, uh.
Okay.
But we don't have enough information.
No, okay. All right, but, and then, then just to read that information, and he also has some other, uh, things talked about, uh, but, uh, I, I think we're making progress, and we're, it's always gonna be a challenge with, uh, getting employment down there, because of the workforce right now is, uh, we need people to come in to work across all industries. Okay. Bob, you, again, you provided, uh, information, this is for a study, if we need to talk, talk about it some more, but Bob provided some information on it.
If, when you're looking at that, on each page, it's the last one.
Okay, just on, just on salaries and things, I don't, I, I'm convinced, uh, this to.
It even tells you how many employees are in that field.
Okay.
But that's in the, that's in the private sector now, but we're pretty comparable in the private sector.
Yeah.
And we're ahead of what other towns, they, just, when you look at that before, I think we increase their pay each year, so.
Okay. Um, moving on, touch a truck, uh, the library's doing this on June twenty-sixth, Lean, I just wanna make sure that we keep the parking on this side, they're gonna put some trucks out there. And touch a truck is, uh, touch a truck is for like, kids to get in there and, and look at fire engines and heavy equipment and stuff like that. It's a successful event, she did it last year, it's not the kind of touch a truck where you put your hand on it and the last one to leave, and you win the truck. Which I, my ignorance, I thought it was that.
I gotta tell you that the little kids love doing that, they like, because in the scene.
Just.
I know it's an experience.
Okay, Lean, you got something in from Health Trust, could you, uh, uh, tell me what this is all about, I was trying, I had a hard time with this one.
It's just, is that the standard for logging into their website? I just have to update that annually, they like to let the selectman know, just in case I'm not physically here, there's a person of authority that will either confirm or deny, you know? Let's get her out of the system and get the next person in online, so it's just a standard annual update, so I will follow up with that.
Thank you.
Can I ask something while Chief is here?
Sure.
Your sign, your, um, solar sign that was just installed.
Yeah.
I've had a few people say they, they've seen it, they see that it's, it's.
Yeah, they had, they had it there, there was an issue with, um, getting it charged.
Okay.
They took it down and, and they're working on it.
It's, so it's.
Chris and Ryan are working on, on trying to get that resolved, and it'd be bad for them.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Energizer, Energizer batteries work better than Duracell.
Chief, on the solar sign, I thought, um, maybe I was wrong, but I thought that was for the intersection over on thirteen and Seventy-seven.
This, this one, it ha, in terms of the grant, it has to be mobile.
Okay.
It has to be moved from place to place, it's a different one.
Oh, okay. So, are we still looking at, uh, getting one from the state at the end of the year on that one, 'cause the state was gonna provide one, I thought.
Yeah, there's some talk about, about that, I'm not sure exactly where it stands, it was, um, it's part of their mitigation plan for short term.
Right, so maybe by the end of the year, we'll have another one in place there.
Okay.
Those would be more permanent signs.
Yeah.
All right, um, I'm gonna open up the public comment again. Chief?
Um, I got information on a, um, radio interoperability grant, um, I have to make application by middle of June, and what they'll do is they'll play, pay the, the state under the grant will pay the program, all of the radios, the police and medical radios for, uh, the, the interoperability, so I'm gonna be presuming that, see if I can get that set up.
Will your grant writer, right, be, uh, lead in that charge?
Uh, this one's more, this one's more technical, so this one's probably not following, he's kinda granted out right there.
Okay.
He's kinda.
And I, I say that as, I say that as a compliment too.
Yeah, no, he, he, he works higher on those than, he has suffered a little bit of grant fatigue, so when I told him, I'll do this one, he was kinda, he's, he's got a lot on his plate.
Um, and just, uh, while you're, while you're, uh, uh, the painting was completed at your entry and exit of your place.
Yeah, it looks, looks good.
Yeah, sent the message to the groundskeeper to, um, make sure, and he said he responded, he'll clean it by the weekend, all the excess leaves behind the building, they're blocking the ignition.
Yeah, and he said that he would wait till the weekend, 'cause the school does not like to hear the lawnmower where he pulls it up through the machine during school.
Yeah, it's distracting for them, they're trying to heat up, yeah.
Yeah.
So, he, he's working progress, okay? And I, I thought the paint job looked nice in the back, I, I haven't seen it, it looks good, and so.
And Tom, Tom looks good, we're.
Yeah, we're happy with it. Okay, uh, bring him back to the board, I'm gonna bring him back to Dave.
Um, I think, Mike, we discussed all the stuff that I had on my agenda, the meetings with different people in the library and the, uh,
Okay.
Public safety building over there, the firing place, so I think I'm good for this week.
All right, Bob?
Well, I just wanna commend, you know, we lament sometimes about a lack of volunteers and stuff, you know, for committees and everything, but I wanna, uh, commend the, uh, Don Larson, Enid Larson, Pat Murphy for setting up Arts on the Common, and all the volunteers, including the garden club, which really, uh, kinda covered a lot of things there for us, uh, but it was, I think it's a success, and the town benefits on it, 'cause the money goes to that, uh, nonprofit on the town hall restoration, and that money's gonna be used at some point in time to restore the town hall, so they benefit, and I think you guys did a real good job, you know, I think should be noted.
And I'd like to just say, for, for the benefit, it helped the town immensely, and even our businesses in town, I heard they did a booming business at the coffee shop. Uh, so they did, they were very happy with the, uh, with the traffic in the area.
Ice cream.
Ice cream, yeah.
Yeah, the ice cream, yeah.
I think it's been enough years now, it's putting Dunbar on the map with a, um, something that, you know, is.
Event that someone looks forward to.
A Mother's Day event.
Yeah.
But it's really, uh, it's an upper-scale event, people like arts and they like to be able to come to those type of things, and I think it's, it's working out, we do have a couple of things, Mike.
Okay, I will, so, okay, good idea.
Um, I just wanted to also, uh, the mill site over at Kemble Pond was cleaned up on May eighth, um, they had the conservation commission meeting there, and several people come out and volunteers, as Bob said, to, uh, donate their time to clean up that site, and it looks a lot nicer down there, if anybody gets a chance to go down and see it, and it was, uh.
Are the signs, are the signs still there?
Signs are there, there wasn't that much trash, it was good.
Good. There was, there was concern when the signs were put in, if they would stay the last duration of letters, uh, making the, the stain around, great. All right, um, I'm gonna go to the town administrator.
I, I believe that this week, we finalized the tax warrant, so Tax Quot is in the process of printing her bills, and people should be expecting them within the next two weeks.
We do have a non-public tonight, uh, for hiring, so I think as I'm gonna, if there's anything else, otherwise I can, uh, I like to make a motion that we go to non-public for RSA ninety-one dash alpha dash three, Roman numeral two. Paragraph B.
I'll second Mike's motion. Delayed motion.
Yeah, exactly, it's no reason to rush, uh, Kaminsky, yes?
Nolchess.
Rattel, yes.
Time.
Do you want to, do you want to?
Eight P M E.
Uh, well, yes, we'll take our two-minute recess while Don is just, just mantling the, uh, figure, thank you, Don.